Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock, which means it's time for our monthly meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. So I will call it to order. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Diker?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. We have a full house tonight. Excellent. Agenda. Staff, any additions, corrections, changes to the agenda as printed?
Actually, never mind. I noticed on here it's already been labeled as tabled, so.
Okay, well, yeah, well, then we'll vote to table those when we get to them. But other than that, we're good. Okay, approval of minutes from the July meeting. Any additions, corrections, changes, et cetera, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, I would vote to approve the July Planning Commission meeting minutes.
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second. I'll do that by general consensus.
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining since I was not present for that meeting.
But he was excused, so we're good. Tonight, we have on the agenda, we have four public hearings in two subdivisions. However, two of the public hearings have been tabled, or the applicant is asking us to table them. That would be PUD 9911, Amendment 922, and 9911 Specific Site Plan Number Two. So I need a motion, gentlemen, to table the first one of those public hearings.
Mr. Chair, I will move to table PUD 11, Amendment 922, and PUD 9911, Specific Site Plan Number Two.
Okay, since they're both for the same case, I guess we can do those together. Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Charles, second.
I have a second. And we'll do that by general consensus. Okay, five zero. We are good. So without further ado, we'll move on to the third public hearing, which is PUD 22-3, Dayton-Zenia Road Rezoning.
This is case number PUD 22-3 on an application filed by Alan Cummings, 2288 Grange Hall Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval to rezone 2.5 acres from R1A, One Family Residential District, and B2, Community Business District, to a CPUD Commercial Plan Unit Development to allow for construction of an office/retail building. The property is located on the north side of Dayton-Zenia Road, approximately 400 feet west of the intersection of Wallaby Drive and Dayton-Zenia Road, further described as Book Five, Page Five, Parcel 171, 172, and 173 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Just to give you all an idea of how we do our public hearings, we'll have a presentation from the applicant. Then we'll have a staff report. Once those two are done, we'll open the floor to input from the public. We ask you to limit yourself to three minutes. And once everybody's had a chance to speak, we'll take any written input that has been received by staff. Once that is done, we'll close the public hearing, and we will discuss it among ourselves and come to a vote. So if there is someone here representing the applicant, please come right on up and tell us about it.
I'm Al Cummings, 2288 Grange Hall Road, Beaver Creek. I'm here to present the case for rezoning a lot right over here on Dayton-Zenia Road. A company, an LLC, called Dayton-Zenia, R-E-L-L-C, bought two lots and then bought a third one that was contiguous. The two lots were B2, that's where the Magnin House is, with another lot behind that or to the north of it. And then there was a elongated lot to the west, running north from Dayton-Zenia, and that was zoned R1A. Their intent is to, I don't have this in concrete yet, so I can't really specify, but if I had to guess, I think they would probably look to put medical offices there. No site plan has been developed yet, but in order to do justice to that, they would need the three lots. So that's why I'm here, to try to get that third lot zoned compatibly with the other two.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before using application requesting approval of a rezoning for approximately two and a half acres on Dayton-Zenia Road, this request, should it be approved, would rezone the three parcels from B2 and R1A to a new commercial planning development. The properties under discussion are located at 3408 Dayton-Zenia Road. There are three parcels. The first parcel, which is actually at the 3408, contains one single family home. It's approximately 1,400 square foot house. The second parcel is a vacant parcel, and then you have the third, bigger parcel here, which is also vacant, with the exception of an abandoned swimming pool that is still located here on the site. The zoning of the properties currently, the larger parcel is zoned R1A, and then the two smaller parcels are both zoned B2, Community Business. As you can see by the zoning map, pretty much all of the adjacent parcels, with the exception of that R1A, and then the R1As going back down the lane, are all zoned B2 in this area. The City of Beaver Creek Land Use Plan designates this area, which on this map is right here, as Community Commercial and Office. The brown area is Office, the pink area is Community Commercial and Office. So it is consistent with the current land use plan. So the proposed zoning change to a PUD would allow us to limit the number of uses that are permitted, as opposed to just going to a straight B2 zoning district. So if you look at Exhibit B attached to the resolution, you'll see all of the uses that are being permitted, and then also we scratched out all of the uses that we think would not be compatible, not only because of the size of the property, but also because of its vicinity to the residential. So you'll see that we removed bars and restaurants. We did allow coffee shops without drive-throughs. Retail is also permitted, and of course, office uses are also permitted, because that is what we think that the applicant is planning to do with the property. Just one thing that I do want to point out is that when we get to the site plan stage, so this is the first, the rezoning portion of it, and they will need to go through a site plan once they get to the point where they're ready to move forward with a building. We do have a 50-foot buffer that will be enforced that is required for any non-residential use adjacent to a residential use. So you can see on this aerial photo, this line represents that 50-foot buffer that would have to remain on the site. So nothing can be placed in that area, with the exception of landscaping, detention ponds wouldn't work there, but that kind of thing. So no parking, no buildings, anything like that. One more thing that I do want to point out, we did meet with the residents that live back down that lane, and they don't have any concerns with this rezoning, as long as that buffer is in place. And also, they made mention of not using their driveway for any part of this, which we wouldn't allow anyway, because we wouldn't want commercial traffic on a residential lane. But that access and everything will be hashed out at the site plan stage. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the attached resolution, and I can answer any questions you have following the public hearing.
Thank you. As this is a public hearing, I will open it now for anyone who wishes to speak either in favor of, against, or simply ask questions. Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there was any written input. No written input. All righty, then, let me see. I think I'll start with my right tonight.
No questions.
I just have one question for staff. Is there any concern at all about just that lot off to, I guess it'd be the east there?
This lot?
Having no access to road, infrastructure, to anything?
So this lot to the east actually does have access. You can't see it here, but McGrath Way is going to come through here.
Oh, okay, that's where McGrath, okay.
Yes, so, yeah.
All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
No questions, sir.
No question, dang. Questions?
No questions.
Okay. I'd be remiss if I didn't have one.
Sure.
At some point here, when I suppose it would be sometime before the specific site plan, will we not have to see a lot recombination? You really can't build across lot lines.
Correct. So depending on how their final plan comes together, I would imagine they will need to combine the lots before we move forward, and that would be conditioned in the site plan.
Okay.
Before we release a zoning permit, a final subdivision shall be recorded.
Okay, okay. So, gentlemen, what we're looking at here is to rezone all three parcels to a PUD rather than straight business, and that's always a plus, because we can condition a PUD a whole lot more than we can just straight zoning. So any second helpings, gentlemen? Okay, then I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 22-3 with the attached six conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Charles, second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's read the roll.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, five zero, and we'll look forward to seeing a specific site plan one of these days. Moving right along, our second public hearing is PUD 96-2, Amendment 922, Resident Sciences.
This is case number PUD 96-2, Amendment 9 of 22, on an application filed by James D. Connell, 3650 Solmer Sett Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval of an amendment to PUD 96-2 to add research and development/engineering laboratories with limited assembly as a permitted use. The property is located at 4051 Indian Ripple Road, further described as Book Three, Page 10, Parcel 171, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing the applicant?
Hello, my name's Ron Miller. I'm the Vice President of President Sciences. Just a little background, we started the company in 2015. There were six of us, and we're a little over 100, actually moderately over 100, maybe 120, 130 now. And so we're at the corner, the northeast corner of Research and Grange Hall is where we started, and we do R&amp;D work, defense work in electronics and antennas, robotic systems, things along that line. And so we grew out of the building at 3975 Research Boulevard, and we moved into some space down Executive Drive, and now we're outgrowing that area. And so a lot of that activity, we just need more space for, and would like to stay in the area. Popular for attracting talent from other parts of the country, and hopefully everyone sees it as good for the area.
Thank you very much.
The case you have before you is PUD 96-2. It's the Resident Sciences PUD Amendment. Again, the applicant's requesting an amendment to the PUD in order to allow their company to move in, which is an engineered, generally, it's an engineering research company, and they perform limited assembly of products inside the building. So they're looking to amend this PUD to allow for that use within the PUD. This area is located in southwestern Beaver Creek. It's a couple hundred yards from east of the intersection of Darston Indian Ripple Road, and you can see the Greentown Center is about a mile, mile and a half to the west. Seen here, and it's kind of hard to see this blue line, but this is the existing PUD boundary. There is a 50,000-square-foot church on this portion of the PUD, and then there's a 37,000-square-foot church on this portion of the PUD. They have 941 parking spaces throughout the entire PUD, and they have a small access point that connects to, there's a traffic light here at Woodcroft and Indian Ripple Road through this assisted living facility, and there's an easement in place right now to get to that access point. The property again is zoned PUD. It was actually originally zoned back in 1996, and then did a comprehensive amendment in 2004, which kind of split the uses of what's allowed on the western portion and what's allowed on the eastern portion. But it also established some significant setbacks from the south. One was setbacks from the southern property line for all structure uses and impervious surfaces of at least 100 feet, but then kind of gave a caveat that it could be 50 feet if Planning Commission allows that. But then it also stated there's a 50-foot open space along the southern property line. And just want to point out, it's important to know that with this amendment, there's no plans to change any of the buffers or building setbacks, so we're not proposing any kind of change to that at all. And kind of want to highlight, here's that 50-foot along the southern property line, where this is the no-cut zone buffer area, so nothing can go there, and then this is a building setback and parking lot setback. The property is located within the Community Commercial Office designation on the Beaver Creek Land Use Plan, and as dedicated as such, these areas are intended for market, you know, citywide market of retail office, but also can include neighborhood and even smaller market-sized developments. Also among that are office and professional services from those market levels of citywide or neighborhood, should be encouraged within these, and that's the language from the land use plan. So what they're proposing in order to move their professional office over to this 50,000 square-foot church is compatible with the land use plan. Just a few of the things that we're proposing to change with this. One is to add research and development offices with limited production, that'd be indoors only, and engineering laboratories with limited production and indoors only. Now, limited production is not defined in any place in the zoning code. When we do a future update to the zoning code, I plan to add that in there, but I wanted to specifically add it into this PUD, so there's no misunderstanding of what that means as it pertains to this PUD. It's the handmade, non-assembly line scale, so it could be five things that they, you know, they get the parts and they assemble it. And we're talking things like radars or radar testing for this business, not where they're getting, they're making thousands of things along on assembly line. So it's a really, limited production is something that would be handmade and on a small scale. Excuse me. Also added a condition that all production should be completely indoors, and no dust, fumes, noxious odors, noises, any of that should be discernible at the PUD line at any time, and that any high bay doors or garage doors should remain closed except during active delivery or pickups. It's kind of, it doesn't generally, I mean, these kind of things typically fall on a specific site plan, but they're really not proposing to make any changes to the site, so they wouldn't have to go through any kind of site plan amendment, they're just moving in. So I wanted to add it here on this, that, you know, everything has to be done indoors, and they can't notice anything at the PUD boundary. And this is the area, this area to the, it's highlighted in orange, so this is the only area that we're proposing to add those particular additional uses. So it's the area east of the 50,000-square-foot building up to the PUD boundary. There are five conditions in the resolution for your consideration this evening. Staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request. Thanks.
Thank you. Nice, comprehensive report. Are there folks here who wish to speak for, against, or simply ask questions about this Last chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there were any written input, if there was any written input.
No.
No, okay. Gentlemen, I will start with my vice chairman.
I have one question for staff. This is more just kind of a general question, but what's going to happen to that property to the west? Is that still actively Vineyard, or what's, is anybody given any sort of indication?
From my understanding now, that there's no, I mean, Vineyard's going to continue to own that, so I presume that they would.
Okay, they're a separate church.
Yeah, there's no change, there's nothing in the request this evening that.
Selling that portion, setting it off. Okay, perfect. And I just had one question for the applicant. What are your intended hours of operation?
We don't really have set hours. We're engineers, so.
Well, I mean, are you working three shifts? Or are you like?
Oh, no, typically.
Typically daylight hours.
The earliest folks will come in at six, and then the latest folks go home at, actually, I drove by on the way out, and I saw the last person leaving, it was just before six, but we do stay late sometimes if there's a delivery or a field test.
I just was trying to understand if this is like a three-shift, 24-hour operation?
No, and it's not, it's not like assembly line production work, it's engineers building robots.
Okay, awesome. I have no further questions, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have no questions.
Okay.
I do, I have actually a question for the applicant. When it comes to the products that you create and the light manufacturing that you do, right, is there any sort of, when going through tests or through the production, any sort of significant audio machinery, when you're doing tests, that it would create any sort of noise?
No, no. You'll hear nothing from outside the building, so zero.
And then for staff? I don't know that I was fully understanding your part of the presentation when it comes to the easement through the nursing home and the access there. Can you expound on that?
Yes, right now, as this site stands, there's this driveway that connects to this assisted living facility, and it's there, and we had them put it there because we want to get people access to the light, the traffic light that's out there.
Is it your understanding that the traffic, the 100 and some employees all week would be using that as an access to?
No, there's an access point down here, and that would be the primary access point. But we want to ensure that, and you'll see this at the subdivision that I'm presenting here in a few moments, that we want to make sure that they do have access if they need or want that.
Okay, I just, I had some concerns about how much traffic increased over an entire work week, rather than worship or Sunday services would be going through that.
Right, I mean, from a traffic standpoint, they have 900 parking spaces because the services get huge on Sundays, and so you wouldn't see, especially with 120 employees, you wouldn't see anywhere near, you might see more during the week, but it wouldn't be anything near what you would see on a Sunday right now.
Okay, those are all my questions.
Just as a nickel's worth of input here, before that easement into the nursing home, on Sunday mornings, the church would have to hire an off-duty cop to direct traffic on Indian Ripple Road as everybody was leaving the church, and it was a big backup. So that's why that easement was put in.
Thank you.
I'll shut up.
So I think you said you addressed this later in the subdivision, but so both lots would have access to both entrances and exits to Indian Ripple?
Yeah, right now, the easement, the cross-access easement's kind of limited to this area, and so I'm proposing a condition, and when we get to the subdivision, that that be extended to this line.
Okay.
So that there's no question that if somebody's there and they wanted to get to that light, because they just don't like trying to pull out on traffic without a traffic light, that they have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Don't leave. One question I've got, you answered my cross-access easement, and I think I've got a good answer on the manufacturing. It sounds like you're doing mostly prototyping.
Well, yeah, I mean, it didn't fit the definition of how we have prototype, which is like one.
Right.
Experimental thing, and then you kind of ship that off to a manufacturer. They're designing stuff and then building them and then shipping off to the user. So it's not, and the stuff, when I'm talking about stuff, I'm not talking, typically not talking little things, I'm talking stuff the size of a table or bigger.
Right.
I mean, there are robots and sensors, and they'll put them on the back of their trailer and drive them to Arizona or something like that. It's not, they're not making widgets to take out to.
Sure, understood.
Lofino to sell.
Understood.
Proger to sell, something like that.
Okay. The only other question I had is, and this always comes up when we have parking lots with lighting that's near residential, if my memory serves me, we have a 25% on this particular parcel, where the lighting has to go down to 25% after everything closes. If it's not, will that carry through from the old PUD?
Yeah, one of the conditions that states that all conditions of '04 and any subsequent conditions since then carry forward, except as modified here.
Okay. I think, other than Al Cummings, I may be the only one in here who was around when this was approved as Furrows Building Supply, and then became a church, and now it's going to become a light manufacturing facility.
I remember going to Furrows, but I don't remember before Furrows.
Well, before Furrows, it was vacant.
Okay.
So, anyway, anything else, gentlemen? Okay, we are looking at a PUD amendment, not the specific site plan or the lot split. So if you have no more questions, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve PUD 96-2, Amendment 922, with the five attached conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Charles, second.
I have a motion and a second. Shall we?
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, five zero. And moving right along, we now, we are finished with our public hearings, so we have two subdivisions. One, 22-6, the mall at Fairfield Commons replat, and then 22-7 is the Vineyard Church replat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant is requesting approval of a replat of several lots within the mall at Fairfield Commons. This replat is a combination of several replats altogether, so it's a little bit confusing.
Yeah, there's a lot going on on the actual plat, so I'm just going to move forward to
this overlay that Randy put together, just so that we can, I can give you just a better idea of what it is they're proposing to do. So the first thing that they're going to do is they're going to break off this piece, which is the former Elder Beerman. I think right now it's being used as like overflow for Morris Home Furnishings, and I think the plan is to sell that separately from the mall, so that's why they're breaking off that piece. So that's the first part, the first component of this replat. The second component of the replat is to split, this is all one parcel, one lot now. So this is the McKenzie River, this is the Black Rock, and then this is the detention pond with the big ground sign for the mall. So they're going to split that off, so each of the restaurants will have its own separate lot, and then they will maintain possession of the pond and the sign, the mall will. And then the last. And then the last part of this replat is actually a corrective replat, so last year Planning Commission approved the creation of this lot here for that, the Marriott Dual Brand Hotel, and I guess when, when it was created, it, it's a little bit off, so they have to, they had to shift it because then the building was going to project out into, into the road or something, so that, so it's, so that lot was already there, but it's correcting that lot, and they decided, well, we'll just do that at the same time as, as we take everything else through Planning Commission. So, so those are all of the components of, of this replat that they're requesting. Staff doesn't have any concerns with, with this request, it meets all of the zoning requirements, and we are recommending approval with the three conditions in the, in the staff report, and all of the area agencies that we sent it out to also are recommending approval or approval with conditions, and I can answer any questions you have right now.
Thank you for making this very uncomplicated. I puzzled over this for a while, and it's a lot easier than it looks. Gentlemen, I'm just going to throw this open to any general questions. It seems like pretty much mechanical here. I do have one, one thing, and that is, the, the, can never keep them straight, the retention pond is, remains part of the mall property.
That is correct.
Okay, so it's actually, you're, you're taking that corner, which was a single parcel, and making it into three, they keep the pond and sell off the two restaurants.
Restaurants, correct.
Got it, okay. Gentlemen, pretty straightforward here, need a, need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S 22-6.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Oh...
With the attached three recommendation.
With the recommendation?
Yes, sir, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and read the roll on this.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, five zero, and they'll be able to clean up their act there. Okay, we got one more, and that's the, the replat of the Vineyard Church that we just heard.
Correct, yes, this is subdivision case S 22, again, it's the replat of the Vineyard Church Fellowship subdivision. Right now, it is one lot that is about 20 acres, and they're proposing to split the lot right down where that orange line that I presented in the last presentation, so Lot 1A, which will contain the, the continuing Vineyard Church will be about 12.1 acres, the Lot 1B, which will contain in the future Resident Sciences, will be about 7.8 acres, and as I mentioned, you can see the, the current access easement is kind of limited to this area, and so what we're, one of the conditions is that they extend that generally in this location, you know, if they need to move it slightly, but continue that up to the property line so that anybody on this property does have legal access to the traffic light. We did route this out to other agencies and received either approval or approval with conditions, and those conditions have been forwarded on to the surveyor so that they can be incorporated into the final Mylar prior to signing it. Staff does recommend approval of the requests, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, questions?
Just one more about the easements. Is there any reason to have like an easement on the southern portion where the driveways connect, like, you know, because if you're like at the church or whatever, what if you want to go out, what is that, the east side of?
It is right here, it extends to right here, so you can...
So there is an easement?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't afford the people here to go through here, but it will afford the people from here to get to here.
Okay, okay.
Others, gentlemen? Just to build on that a little bit, it would seem to me that if the easement goes one way but not the other, either the church or Resident Sciences could fence that off, and what I'm thinking is that if you've got trucks coming in and out of the Resident Sciences folks, that would give their trucks two ways to get to the traffic light, instead of having to pull out onto Indian Ripple Road with a reasonably large truck.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking, do we need to formally say that they would be a cross-easement at the southern driveway, like we do for the northern driveway?
We can, if that's, if...
I'd feel a little more comfortable that way, but I can't propose it, so gentlemen, you would have to add that, either add that into the, the condition, it would be condition three, so it would say to the north, the southern, the existing southern driveway. And if somebody's got that written up and would like to propose this as a...
I don't really want to worry about that, you're saying about the north or south, do you want to just amend the actual attached drawing to reflect that?
I can do that.
Okay.
As opposed to rewording it, because it doesn't really say north versus south driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just amend the...
To say access, existing driveway access, how do we do that? We have a lawyer here, he can tell us.
You can just con...
Cross, cross-access easements shall be extended to the western property, because I think it's western, right?
Yep.
And just as depicted on Exhibit A between lot in Harbor Creek, yeah, I think we just need to depict it on the bottom portion of it there, so, since there are two easements.
I'll just, I, I can just amend Exhibit A to reflect what you guys...
So as long as we, as long as we agree and understand that it, it will be both to the north and to the south?
Yeah, change, change three a little bit so, to reflect it's cross-access easements, not the cross-access.
Plural.
Yeah.
I'm kind of a belt and suspenders guy on, on, on access like that, for several reasons. Okay, now I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve case number S 22-7 with an amendment made to recommendation three to read, cross-access easements shall be extended to the western property line of Lot 1A.
Okay, I have a motion.
Can I ask a quick point of order?
Sure.
I'm sorry, so we're in that condition, we're referencing a future attachment A that hasn't been amended, is that, is there any issue with that?
The intent of the, of the amendment, we should probably say is that, as, which shall be depicted, which easements shall be depicted on attachment A, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll amend attachment A, and, and the chairman has to sign off on the final Mylar, so he'll...
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, we're, we're referencing something that hasn't been done, but we generally...
I won't let it slither by.
Okay, so...
Easement's already there, really.
Correct.
It's just a matter of making the paperwork to make sure it's, goes both ways.
I figured it was safer to ask the question now than...
Absolutely, absolutely.
The chairman needs to sign off on the final Mylar, so he'll, he'll see it or not.
Mr. Chair, I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so if you would be so good as to read the, read the roll.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Diker?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries, five zero, and we are just pleased as punch that Resident Sciences can stay in Beaver Creek. My only regret is that that's our cruise-in parking lot, but I'm sure we'll find another spot, or maybe you guys will be nice to us. So, gentlemen, anything else for the good of the order? Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the October 2022 meeting of the zoning commission.
Mr. Chair, I second.
I have a second, and we are at 6:40.